Wrap up your conversations, please. Okay, thank you. Hello, for those that don't know, my name is Jonathan Nicola, I'm the mayor of Kearney. And as I get to do so many events around our community, I get the honor of welcoming you to our community, for those that are out of town, to be here. On behalf of our residents, we'd love to be welcoming to the folks that come to our community. Also want to recognize fellow city council member Alex Strathman up in the front here as well. As you can see, we'd love to share our growing vibrant and friendly community with visitors. And for those who haven't been here lately, you can see we've been very busy and are always committed to improving our community and for our residents and guests. So this area, come back in a year, it's gonna be a lot different. It's an honor to, for us, that Senator Ricketts selected Kearney to be the host for this event, giving our area residents and those from around the state a chance to engage so directly in the American democratic process. And as we all know, our representative democracy has always been a little messy, but it's our shared value of freedom that makes us all a lot stronger. I really appreciate Senator Ricketts' commitment to speaking face-to-face with Nebraskans about key issues in our country, his commitment to bringing Nebraska perspectives to DC, and to tackle the questions and concerns of voters head-on here today. His service for our state and nation is greatly appreciated. My job in this opening is to talk about how this event's gonna run, how the question-and-answer is gonna work, how the program's gonna work. So I'm gonna provide that information for you now. Very shortly after I'm done, Pastor Clark will deliver a brief invocation. After that, Senator Ricketts will provide opening remarks and an update on his effort to bring Nebraska solutions to Washington before moving to questions and answers. There will be two question-and-answer options for you, which will be alternated. Before asking a question, either at the microphone or in writing, please leave with your name and where you're from. There was an option to submit a written question as you entered. The basket for questions is with Sarah in the back, and Sarah is in the green jacket. So if you feel most comfortable writing a question, you can provide that to Sarah. Please submit any other remaining written questions to the basket during Senator Ricketts' opening comments, if you haven't already done so. Also, you can email your question to events@rickets.senate.gov. And then finally, there will also be an option to ask questions at the microphone. Noah and Brad will stand at the side of the room with microphones. So Brad is in the corner in the blue jacket, Noah over there at the other blue jacket in the glasses in the back. So they will be going around the room providing the microphone. So written questions and questions on the microphone will be alternated, as I said earlier, every three questions. And then Noah will draw questions when we get to that point in the program and read them out loud to Senator Ricketts. Okay, so that's the housekeeping items. So we're gonna begin. I'm gonna ask you all to stand. We're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, our nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Please stay standing, and I'll ask Pastor Clark to offer an invocation.
When he made that introduction, he said something about pastor and a brief invocation. I think there was something that the mayor might have said. Thank you for standing with us as we pray. Let's assume an attitude of prayer. Father, we love you today. Thank you for loving us, blessing us with this, another day of life. I ask that you will bless this gathering, each and every one represented here. Give this gathering a sense of peace and understanding. Thank you for those who serve our nation. Thank you for Senator Ricketts to be here. Bless him in the work that he does. Bless all those that serve their communities and their constituents. Father, thank you for this great nation. We ask that you will bless us with your presence. Father, teach us always to rely on you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. And now, Santa Claus.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for your service at Kearney. And Pastor Clark, thank you very much. And then also, thank you for the work you're doing with Hot Meals. You've got a bunch of meals preparing here at Kearney and taking it up to Brown County for the firefighters up there. I think you just had about 150 of them you've taken care of. So thank you very much for that. And thank you all. And thank you all very much for coming out today to talk about the important issues that we face in Washington, DC. As the mayor said, I've got some topics we're gonna cover, and then we'll go open up and queue questions and answers, so we can go into firm details on those topics. You're gonna ask questions about other topics if you want. And then we'll wrap this all up by noon and be respectful of everybody's time to keep us on schedule. So the deal is that Republicans took control of both the, well, were in charge of the House and now the Senate and White House. And John Thune is our new leader in the Senate. And he's got this crazy idea that we should work Monday through Friday like normal people. And what that means is we are actually scheduled to be in session 57 more days this year than we were last. Think about that. It's almost two months more in session this year than we were in the same 12-month period last year. And in fact, we've actually already spilled over from Friday into Saturday morning several times already. In fact, we had some votes that went till about 2:00, at least, or 2:00 in the morning, right before we had a two-week recess right here, according to the continuing resolution. That went till like 4:30 in the morning on Saturday. So a lot going on. In fact, if you look at what we've been able to accomplish over the course of the last few, it's been about 100 days now, you see that we were actually in session for 10 weeks in a row from the start of the year. That's the first time since, well, at least in 15 years that's happened. We've been able to get all Trump's nominees, cabinet nominees, appointed. And that happened in a timeframe faster than, I think, any time in the last 15 years. We've been able to approve about 50 nominees, including ambassadors and other appointees. And that's also the fastest it's happened since, you know, faster than Biden, Obama, and Bush. And we've also taken about 200 roll call votes, which is the most votes we've taken in the first 100 days going back to the Reagan era. So you can see there's been a lot going on in Washington, DC. We've been in session a lot, working on getting all this stuff done. In addition to all those nominees I just talked about, and there's generally, I think, about 1,200 nominees that have been approved by the US Senate whenever you've got a new administration. So there's a lot to do there. But we also were able to pass two different laws that address the border security, which is one of President Trump's promises. The first is the Lake and Riley Act. In fact, that was the first bill, I think, the president signed. And this was based on the issue that we had, you know, when Jose Abarra killed Lake and Riley in Georgia. He was an illegal immigrant. Had actually been picked up a couple of times by the cops. Once for child endangerment, once for shoplifting. But he wasn't detained. And actually, we had the same issue here with Sarah Ruud when, as when Mejia kills her, right after she graduated from Belgrade College. He wasn't detained. He was able to post bail, and he fled the country. Now, he's since been apprehended and working on his extradition to bring her back to his country. But both those cases outline the problems when ICE doesn't do its job and pick up illegal immigrants who commit additional crimes and detain them. And so that's what the Lake and Riley Act and Sarah's law was incorporated into that as well. It requires ICE and Department of Homeland Security to work with those local law enforcement agencies to be able to detain illegal immigrants who committed those crimes and hold them so that they can be properly adjudicated and ultimately deported. That's gonna help make it safer. So that's an important thing that we got passed, and the president signed it as well. Another one related to border security is the Halt Fentanyl Act. Now, one of the crazy things, because I think it's crazy, is that we know fentanyl is a very dangerous drug. It's a leading killer of young people aged 18 to 45. 70,000 people annually die from fentanyl overdoses. Yet, we would have to make that a Schedule I drug every year. We would have to pass that again, even though we all know how dangerous it is. So the Halt Fentanyl Act makes it permanently, put fentanyl permanently on that Schedule I list so that you can increase the penalties for trafficking in fentanyl and that sort of thing. We would have to keep going back and do that over and over and over. And that will, again, help cut down on the trafficking of fentanyl that's coming across our borders and making sure that we're taking a strong stand against that. So those are two of the bills that we got passed. There's also something that we do called Congressional Review Acts. Now, what these are, are basically the Congress can try to overturn a regulation that the executive office does, the executive branch does. We've done that seven times on different Biden-era regulations, where the Biden administration was trying to expand the scope. The bureaucrats were trying to expand the scope of what their authority was outside of the laws that Congress passed. So for example, I led one about the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, where they were expanding their authority outside of the banking era into payment systems. So they were supposed to stick to the banking, and they were trying to do it for our payment systems that we use. And what the kind of crazy part about this is, those payment systems, by and large, are people very pleased with. You know, like Venmo, right? The complaints we get from those is really tiny compared to other complaints we get. They tried to expand their authority in that, so I introduced a Congressional Review Act to block that regulation. And this is where, again, having a delegation work together. Mike Flood introduced a companion bill in the House. So we got those passed. And now that was sent to the White House for the president's signature. We've done that for a variety of other regulations. Everything from trying to restrain the IRS from going after cryptocurrency companies to blocking regulations like the natural gas tax the Biden administration wanted to put in place. They also had regulations that would increase the cost for consumers around things like freezers and coolers and water heaters and stuff like that. All the stuff that they wanted to increase had regulations to increase the cost to consumers. So we passed seven of those, and some of those have already been signed. Like, see, the one I passed is still waiting to be on the president's desk right now. But those are also some of the things we've been able to get accomplished in the first 100 days or so. Now, another thing that we did, right before we took our recess week before last, is we unlocked the reconciliation process. So let me talk about that a little bit, because it doesn't happen all that much. Reconciliation is a different way that we can go about addressing mandatory programs. So mandatory programs are things like Medicare, Medicaid, the SNAP program. These are programs that, by and large, are on automatic pilot unless Congress does something with them. So that's the mandatory part. And that's actually the largest part of the budget. That's like two-thirds. It's actually over two-thirds. There's the other part of the budget called discretionary spending. And this, you can think about it as like just running the agencies. So that's the discretionary part of the budget. But it also includes like Defense Department and things like that. That is a separate, you know, a separate line-up, where we passed 12 appropriations bills, or supposed to at least. Passed 12 appropriations bills every year, just refund those. Now, on the appropriation side, we haven't been doing that process, and that's a problem. And if we want to get into the details of that, we'll talk about that a little later. But the reconciliation process is specifically supposed to address the mandatory part of the spending. Now, in the past, some programs who were usually, who traditionally thought it was discretionary and being mandatory, included in that mandatory spending, to be included in the reconciliation process. Again, that's gonna, again, get a little bit into the weeds there, but that's what this is about. So we passed a budget resolution that would kick off the reconciliation process. Now, what does that mean to kick it off? Well, what that does is it instructs all the committees of jurisdiction to start taking action. So for example, in our reconciliation bill, we put $175 billion into border security. What the reconciliation process then does is it instructs the committee that looks over, you know, homeland security, to start figuring out, okay, how are you gonna spend that money? You're gonna finish building the wall. You're gonna hire more prosecutors, hire more judges. There's, you know, approximately, for example, 350,000 illegal immigrants in this country that have criminal charges, allegedly coming here illegally. 35,000 of those are charged with murder and sexual assault. So they're very dangerous people. So we need to make those folks a priority to apprehend and then ultimately deport. But we need the resources to be able to do that. So that's part of what the reconciliation bill is supposed to address. It's also got $150 billion for our military. We are in the most dangerous time in our country's history since World War II. We have dictators like Putin, Xi, in Russia and China. We also have Iran, North Korea, that are really challenging the system that we have today and undermining American leadership and making it a more dangerous world. Obviously, we see what's happening with Putin when he invades Ukraine. Xi is looking at trying to take Taiwan by force. We gotta deter that. So that's part of what we want to do, and that is to help strengthen our navy and so forth. So this would, for example, strengthen armed services, go figure out how you're gonna spend that. There's also the tax cuts. There are two. So in 2017, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was passed. And our goal is to make those tax cuts permanent. So the Finance Committee will be taking, is instructed then to say, okay, how are you gonna do that? And then all the committees then have to say, okay. Well, so the Finance, again, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act is important because if we don't do that, it'll be a $4 trillion increase on the American people. So for example, the standard deduction would get cut, the child tax credit would get cut by $1,000. So actually, for our farmers and ranchers, the death tax deduction would get cut in half as well. That'd make it harder to pass on family farms and ranches. All that happens if those tax cuts expire. Your average family of four making $80,000 a year would see a $1,700 tax increase if those tax cuts expire. So our jobs are trying to get those extended, and actually, our goal is to make it permanent. Now, on the flip side, all the other committees have to go out and find the cost savings to be able to pay for that. So you may have seen some stuff in the paper, how the House is like, oh, the Senate's not, the Senate aren't, they're not cutting enough out of the budget. We have different rules from the House, so we've set the bar for a lot of these committees. It's not, how about, a billion dollars. But the reason is, is if we don't hit our targets, we lose the special status we give for the reconciliation bill, and that makes it harder to get passed. So the House has different rules than we do. Our rules are very clear about how we get this priority to be able to do this process, which is why, if you see that, oh, you know, this committee or that committee only asked kind of a billion dollars, that's just to make sure we hit that target. We will be going far above that. In fact, I expect that, you know, if you look at, compare what the House says goals for cutting spending, we'll probably go beyond what the House says. So that process is all kicked off by this reconciliation resolution that we passed a couple of weeks ago. Now, I expect that process to take a while. This is obviously big, complicated stuff. We've got a lot of work to do. And so maybe we're voting on this in July, but I think it's probably more likely that it happens in September or October. And of course, the tax cuts expire at the end of December, so we've got a hard deadline there. But this is gonna be a lot of work between now and over the next several months to get this all to a good place. So that's a, that's a big deal that we'll be working on a lot over the next several months. We may see a lot of news stories about that, is this whole reconciliation process and what it means and how we're gonna pull all this stuff together. What are some of the priorities that I've worked on? Well, I've introduced a number of bills that I'll just kind of check off. But a lot of what we've been doing is things that we did here in Nebraska. We call them our Nebraska Solutions Ready for America, and how we can bring that to the rest of the country. So for example, one of the things that we did here that was very effective was our SNAP Next Step program. This is where we offered our job coach, the Department of Labor, to our families on SNAP, the Food SNAP program, and helped them get better jobs so they could reduce their lives on SNAP. It's been very effective here in Nebraska, and now we want other states to be able to take advantage of it. So it's a bipartisan bill I've got with Congressman Joe Brandt from New York. Actually, we introduced him last Congress, and it's in the framework. And Senator Bozeman, who's now the chair of the Ag Committee, has got for his farm bill. So we're working on it. Senator Joe Brandt, to get it reintroduced in this Congress, but it was a bipartisan bill last Congress. Another bill I've got with Senator Gillibrand is our Rural Flood Program, to be able to help with that. And then I've got with Senators, and that's also part of the framework. And then we want to make sure also with Senator Ken Smith, again, a Democrat, this time from Minnesota, working on rural micro entrepreneurship. So we've got a micro entrepreneurship program that's set to expire. We're extending it. We want to give more flexibility to it so that, for example, we use or renovate buildings, make it so the loan doesn't have to be, you can have the loan can be a greater percentage of the project, all sorts of different changes to that. And that's also part of the farmer framework. So I'm obviously not trying to get those things incorporated in the farm bill that gets passed. Other things I'm working on are like our Flex Fuel Fairness Act. That would give flex fuel vehicles the same relative tax breaks that EVs get. That's a bipartisan bill with Amy Klobuchar. I've got Biofuels for Ocean Going Vessels Act, which would allow ocean-going vessels to get credit for producing like biodiesel or renewable diesel. That's another bill I've got with Amy Klobuchar. So again, trying to do what we do really well here in Nebraska, which is biofuels. It's a win-win situation, right? It's a win for consumers who save money at the pump. It's a win for cleaning up the environment. It's a win for our farmers and ranchers, and it's a win to make us less dependent on more sources of energy. So it's, again, one of those Nebraska solutions, our biofuels, to be able to promote out there and be able to get that done. One of the other things, when you look at what we were able to do here in Nebraska, is we were able to phase out the taxes on veterans' military retirement benefits. So we did that, you know, in stages over time. So I've introduced a bill, and Jackie Rosen, a Democrat from Nevada, is my co-sponsor on that one, to start phasing out the taxes on veterans' military retirement benefits. The president's also talking about trying to phase out the tax on Social Security. We did that here in Nebraska a few years ago, again, during in stages. I've introduced a bill, the Social Security Tax Cut Act, to start phasing out the federal taxes, federal income taxes on Social Security. Again, taking it down a step at a time. So we'll see if that gets incorporated into any of the ideas that the Finance Committee is working on for what this tax package is gonna look like through reconciliation. As you know, another thing that we focused on when I was governor is doing a great job of providing services and making sure we were being wise stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So again, I'm working with Jackie Rosen on something called improper payments. Our bill is called the Improper Payments Transparency Act. And what that does is help get more insight into improper payments. You're like, what are improper payments? So improper payments are when we either pay the wrong party, so the third person sends a check to the wrong person. We pay them too much money, or we don't pay them enough money. And the GAO, our Government Accountability Office, estimates that since 2003, we've had $2.7 trillion in improper payments. In 2023, that number was $236 billion. So what our bill does is require the executive branch to give the Congress a report on these improper payments and what they're doing to mitigate those things so that we can get that under control. So now, the challenge to get any of these things done is you gotta get a bill that is moving. Things in the Senate take a long time to get done. So I mentioned, like, some of the other bills I had as part of the farmer framework. We gotta get a farm bill passed. We've done the extension twice now. It goes until September 30th. Our farmers and ranchers deserve this certainty. Am I there already? Oh my gosh, we are. I've got, we've got five minutes left for me. See if I can wrap up. Joyce, so Joyce knows, she's sitting in the front row here, she gave me the yellow card. She knows I tend to talk too much, so I gotta just pick it up real quick. So getting things moving is part of the challenge, which is why we gotta get farm bill done and why getting things in the farm bill gives them a better chance to get passed. I'm just gonna hit upon some other things real quick. We gotta get our spending under control. In 2019, pre-pandemic, we spent $4.4 trillion to the federal government. We had a $900 billion budget deficit that year. So we added $900 billion to our debt. Pandemic came along, and we took our spending up. The problem is, we never took our spending back down to pre-pandemic levels. So if you look, in this last year, 2024, we spent $6.9 trillion. That's a 55% increase in just five years. Folks, that's not sustainable. Our population didn't go up that much. Inflation wasn't that much. We've gotta get that rein in, back under control. In 2024, we had a $1.9 trillion deficit. We doubled the deficit. We can't just keep adding $2 trillion in debt worth. Right now, we're $36 trillion in debt. It's one of the things that drives inflation. We cannot keep doing that. We gotta get this under control, which is gonna be hard, hopefully, to tackle the reconciliation process, plus the other things we're gonna do with regard to getting a regular appropriations process and so forth. And then the last thing I want to hit upon real quick before we go to Q and A is tariffs. A lot of people ask about tariffs. I got this chart over here on the left, which is actually our agricultural trade. I know you can't really see it. The thing I want to point out is just, like, on the far left-hand, the last few recent years, you can see it's red. That means we got an agricultural trade deficit. The Biden administration was the first administration since Carter not to do a trade deal. And they didn't really promote our products. And so what we saw is, we had an agricultural trade deficit. Where usually, we've always been trade surpluses, but it was like $16 billion, they're going to $32 billion, and then like, I think it's estimated this should be $49 billion. And one of the things that the president wants to do is level the playing field on tariffs. The world charges us four times the level of tariffs on an average-weighted value basis that we charge the rest of the world. And you might say, well, how did we get there? Well, actually, we did that on purpose. We set up the system. It goes back to World War II. In 1944, we had a conference in Redmond, New Hampshire, where we were looking about the post-war. And what we said is, we're gonna have high, we're gonna have low tariffs, so countries can export their goods to us. Other countries will have high tariffs, which makes it harder for us to export our products to them. But we're gonna do that to help them develop their industries to recover from World War II, because we're the only major industry that, or industrial power that wasn't devastated. So we're gonna help those countries out of it. But importantly, we did it because we wanted to get those countries on our side against the Soviet Union. The system worked wonderfully well. The problem is, the Soviet Union fell 34 years ago, and the system was not changed. And now our allies have gotten used to this sweetheart deal they've got. And the president wants to get that leveled out. So for example, let's just talk a lot about agriculture. We import about $29 billion of Australian beef here. Australia imports zero of ours. They block all of ours. And this is something I saw as governor all the time when I was on the trade missions. Either through tariffs or non-tariff trade barriers, countries would block our products from going to their country. The European Union, for example, they will take our biotech soybeans, but not our biotech corn. And when I had this conversation with Phil Hogan, who was then the ag commissioner for the EU, he said, yeah, we know there's no scientific reason to block your biotechnology, but we have a lot of NGOs who create trouble, and so politically, we just can't take the corn. Well, that's a problem. Mexico, which has signed US MCA, is blocking our corn as well right now for cultural reasons. Japan, which, we have the largest military presence outside the United States in Japan, but they would put limits on how much beef they would take from us. Vietnam has a 30% tariff on our beef. Thailand's got a 50% tariff. I was talking to Jan Zibensel about biofuels. Our tariff on Brazilian ethanol coming to this country is zero. They have 18% tariff on our ethanol going to Brazil. Taiwan has a 17% tariff on our products, our agricultural products, going to that country. I don't think there's anybody who would deny that Taiwan's not gonna be there unless the United States is there. So these are some of the things the president wants to level the playing field on. Here's just another example. I think the tariff, Germany charges on us, our cars going into, Germany is like 25%, and our tariff's 2.5%. So we want to level it out. Same thing true for Japan. They've got tariff barriers to stop our cars from going there. So those are the type of sort of things the president wants to get leveled out. So he announced this big tariff stuff. Got to raise attention. Now he's got 35 or 75 countries that have come to the Senate wanting to negotiate trade deals. I was just in the Philippines and Taiwan. I can tell you, they're not mad. They see this as a business deal, and they want a new ownership. So for example, I sat down at dinner with Vice President Xiao, who's the Vice President of Taiwan. And she's like, you know, we're willing to talk to you about all this stuff. We made proposals to the Trump administration. In fact, we're already talking to Howard Lutnick. We've already been in conversations. I'm like, great, they're prioritizing, trying to get this deal made fast. She's like, hey, we buy our soybeans from Brazil. We'll start buying from you now. We buy our liquid natural gas from Australia. We'll start buying from you now. So they're open to buying more of our products. Now they say, hey, but we also need to know. So for example, we double tax Taiwanese companies who want to make investments in this country, so we need to get that right. So I made the commitment to work with Senator Coons, who's a Democrat from Delaware, who also sits on foreign relations, to work on that tax treaty. So we're gonna take that back and try and get that done as part of our commitment. So there's a lot of work we're gonna do with regard to it. The president's, you know, put it, not even a pause on this. The President's, you know, put a 90-day pause list, these are very complicated things. I expect it's probably gonna take longer than 90 days to get around to all these different countries. But that's part of the reason why the President's doing it, is trying to level the playing field. So that when we're shipping our goods overseas, we're on a level playing field with what other countries are trying to do here, ultimately trying to get to, again, we'll get to questions and answers in just a minute. So we gotta get a level playing field for our folks to be able to get there. So that's what we're trying to do, accomplish this. It's gonna be a process, it's gonna create some disruption, but the idea is to get this done so we can get beyond it and have that level playing field. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up the questions and answers again. Please just, when you get up to ask your questions, say your name and where you're from, and then we can dig into any of these topics in more detail, or we can go on to other topics as well. And we got Noah's got a microphone, we got a couple of hands up over here.
Just relatively to the audience, we're gonna ask the people to line up and then we'll do the questions that way. So I'll do the first come, first served. Thank you.
Yeah, and try and keep your questions relatively brief. I'll try to keep my answers relatively brief, so we can get to as many questions as possible.
And Senator, just as the people are lining up, I have a question for you. This is a written question from the audience. So Senator, are you going to name the tax cuts permanent?
So, okay, that's a fast and easy one, but the answer is, that was our goal, is to be able to make the taxes permanent.
Hi, I'm Michelle Moes from Northfolk, Nebraska. And my question, I was a retired attorney with the Internal Revenue Service, State and Gift Tax Division. And you were talking here a little bit about reducing the deficit that we have. With those, you guys have decimated the Internal Revenue Service and many other government agencies. I know in the State Gift Tax Division, half of their program has just taken a deferred retirement plan, and so they will be losing those. For the people in the audience that don't know, the federal state tax hasn't come in to plan unless you have $14 million with $28 million to a husband or wife team. So that's quite a benefit that's exempt, probably wouldn't impact most of the people in this room. The IRS, for every dollar you spend, they make you $6, and for high-income taxpayers, they make you $13. I want to know when you and the other Republicans in Congress are gonna step up to the President, or stand up against the President, and say, some of these cuts are too much. We're damaging all of our government agencies, we're damaging all of the institutions that we have, we're losing Medicare, Medicaid, things like that. And I don't see any benefit to doing that to all of the people that are in Nebraska.
Thank you for your feedback on that with regard to what's going on in the IRS. As I mentioned, if you look at the chart over there, we gotta get our spending under control. And the, you know, the administration is going through that process of looking at what they need. If you guys are around, we'll have fewer type of questions. If you guys are around, we may have fewer type of questions. So, and just so you know, behind the scenes, there's been a number of conversations with the administration on different things they're doing. So I'll give you a couple of examples that aren't directly related to the IRS.
That's not the answer to the question.
But one of the things. So we are talking, your question was a farm, you're gonna talk to Brett, the administration? The answer is yes. I've already done other things like tariffs. So for example, when we first announced those tariffs, I had conversations with a number of cabinet members about, hey, here's what's gonna impact how we're starting to make, why a lot of people, $100 billion impact, they off people, that's a problem, that's, you're hurting Americans, specifically Nebraskans, if you don't fix those. Or on the stuff with USAID, I said, there's obviously things that we don't want to spend money on, and there's also good things we do do that help promote US interests around the world. So I talked specifically, I conversed with Mark, we'll be about those. So those conversations are ongoing with regard to different issues about what they're doing and how we're, you know, what's the right way forward, and to try and say, hey, we gotta make sure we're taking our approach where we're still preserving things that we did here at the state of Nebraska, which is do a good job providing sources and get our expenses under control.
Our expenses are under control, tax for rich.
Hi, my name is Bryce Brothman. I am from here in Carney. I want to purposefully say, I've spent a lot of time to come here and ask your questions, who agree with most Republicans. I just want to ask, when 16 UNL students lost their funding to go teach at low-income schools, where were you? When international students going to the Nebraska University just had their visas revoked, where were you? When the national public service lost funding for butter belief, where were you? You're supposed to represent us.
Yeah.
And not you.
Brian, thank you for that feedback. So a lot of those issues, I know some of the decisions are being made, are gonna be tough. We've got to get our spending under control, we talked about some of those issues. So when it comes to, for example, like visas, if somebody has an issue with their visa or any other issue, we've got, one of the things that we work with, we're hard on constituent services. So if somebody has an issue, contact our office and we'll review those. We do that all the time.
That doesn't sound very efficient.
Too broad.
As I mentioned before, we are having conversations with the administration behind the scenes. And so you mentioned, I'm trying to think of all the things that started, so the student visas, which you said, if you got a problem with your visa, you can contact us. Again, scholarships, we gotta, again, get that spending under control, so that's been part of it as well.
School is the best way out of poverty.
Weather, right. Actually, that one in particular, we got a great delegation. Mike Flood could lead on that, to sit down with the administration. Because we work together as a team, and we have these conversations with the administration. We don't necessarily, you know, put out press releases, we do, but we do what behind the scenes to address those things.
Great, next question. Thank you. My name is John McGurk, and I'm from Grand Island. Now here's what I want to know. Social Security is entirely self-funded through designated payable taxes. Americans pay this tax on income they receive up to $126,100 per year. What that means is the vast majority of people that's going to pay Social Security taxes on 100% every penny of what they have earned in a year. Conversely, the wealthiest people in this country, billionaires, people like yourself, Senator, would pay Social Security taxes on only a tiny percentage of their annual income. If we simply eliminated this cap, we would not only ensure the financial stability of Social Security for future generations, but we would expand its benefits for working Americans and our retirement peers. What I want to know, Senator, is why you think reducing or eliminating benefits that Social Security recipients receive is a better idea than simply lifting the cap and marketing and making the riches pay their fair share?
Protecting Social Security is one of the priorities President Trump has already talked about. There is no doubt that we have gotten issues with Social Security, as we have had, you know, I'm sure you know all the stats with regard to how many people paid into the system. When the system was first created back in the 30s, and now we're down to like between two and three people paying for the system right now. So, again, figuring out a solution to protect Social Security is not gonna be an easy thing. There's been a number of issues that I proposed. A number of issues that people have been talking about within the US Senate to be able to address it. I can't tell you that I've got a solution for you right now that is gaining consensus. I hope it gets passed both the Senate and the House, and gets to the President's test. So there's a number of different solutions people are talking about to be able to do it. I don't, like I said, I can't tell you there's a solution right now that's gaining consensus on this, but it is something that, you know, we're talking about in the Senate, because I've been a part of those conversations about how we address this. There's conversations going on on the House side as well. One thing I do want to say though is, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, cutting Social Security through the reconciliation process. By law, you actually can't touch Social Security through a reconciliation process. So that actually, that is, that is.
You possibly hold out an administrative, and then make some progress.
There's never anything that we can do, nothing has gotten a consensus on how we can trust going forward.
My name is Burke, I'm from 16 County. My question is, you were appointed to the seat by your political ally, Governor Villan, after donating heavily to his campaign, but now you're voting for tax breaks, corporate tax breaks that benefit your family's wealth and your personal $160 million. How is this not a conflict of interest? And why should Nebraskans not see this as insider trading?
As I talked about a little earlier, the tax cuts that were put in place in 2017 are set to expire during this year. So we are working to make sure we extend those, and we want to make them permanent. As I mentioned before, the average family of, so the average family of four making $8,000 received $1,700 taxation fees. Middle-income families, all the rates go down. So if they expire, taxes are going up for everybody. And with regard to, with regard to my appointment, I got appointed to fill out two years of Ben Sasse's term. Last year, I ran a special election to finish out the last two years of Ben Sasse's term. And I'm up for another six-year term in this, I got. So yes, I was appointed, but I ran to finish out the rest of Ben's term, and now I'm running again. And so what was your, so again, I support him.
All of your type of benefits that are benefiting you and your wealth, how is that not considered insider trading for all of the benefits that you're receiving that normal family earns?
So all the things for the Taxation Jobs Act were passed, obviously, before I got there. And what we're talking to is extending those. So it has nothing to do with what we're talking about there, because what we're trying to do is just keep current policy in place. Oh, we're going to Brad now?
I'm Marcus, I'm from Carney, Nebraska here, and thank you for being here, Senator. I'll make this quick. You mentioned the Financial Consumer Protection Bureau, and you said it wasn't doing its job and was created in 2008, '09, and '10 at the last recession. Is that bureau still in existence?
The CFPB is still around, yes. What I said was that it had tried to expand its scope outside what the law of Congress passed. So Congress gave them authority over the banking system, not payments. These are, like Venmo's not bank. So it doesn't have authority to be able to regulate that, like they did with banking. So it stepped out of the lines of what Congress said, and that's the regulation we pulled back down.
Okay, it's my understanding that that's been dismantled.
No, the CFPB is still there. It's not that the current person has downsized some of the staff, but the CFPB is still there.
The downsizing, that problem was put together to protect the consumers. I retired eight years ago from the management industry. I was on the Fed board, and we created that bureau. Don't downsize, we need to protect everybody here.
So, and this is the CFPB. The organizations looking out for consumers in the banking industry include the Fed, the FDIC, the FTC, the OCC, and importantly, your state bank regulators. And I can tell you that, having been governor and had the Bank Department Board meeting, that if any consumer had a complaint about a bank, and I don't care what size the bank was, we would have investigated that complaint and got to the bottom of what the consumers were playing about. So there are multiple organizations that are out there protecting consumers when it comes to banking. The CFPB is just one, there's a number of other ones that are doing it, including right here in Nebraska.
All those were in existence when the program was developed in 2010. So everything is just that, they were already in existence. We needed that program because things got crazy.
My name is Colin, I'm from Haynes Falls. RFK Junior has just announced he wants to create a disease database that will track autistic people using triad medical data. Do you have any plans to oppose this? You represent some 30,000 plus autistic people in the state of Nebraska. They are your constituents too. This is a horrifying, overreached government, and it should scare the hell out of everybody.
So I gotta tell you, I just know, what I know about what RFK Junior is planning on doing is what I heard about and read about in the paper. So I don't have details where I can. I can tell you what the goal is, is to try and see if there is something that is causing autism that we can then address. So I don't have all the details to be able to tell you about what's in that program. I do know that it might have some, but I. So I can't tell you right now whether or not I'm gonna oppose or not, because I don't have the details on it. I can tell you what I heard in the paper about what they're trying to do, and what the goal is. So I think the goal is to try and address, what is the cost of autism is a good one. Whether this is the right way to do it or not, I'd have to dig into it more, but if you contact our office, we'll get back to you when we know more about it.
I'm Colin Wilkie, I'm here in Carney. In recent months, many tens of thousands of federal workers have lost their jobs. How many congressional or senatorial staff have lost their jobs?
So with regard to the jobs, we have that way off my office. We have a normal turnover, as you might expect, we hire people back, we have them laying away off my office. All right, Noah, are we gonna go to some of the recent questions?
Absolutely, Senator. Okay, so Sue Greenlaw from Carney is asking, please comment on the Save Act passed by the House. Will the Senate follow suit?
With regard to the Save Act, I don't, again, a lot of the time with all these things, it is tough to get things passed in the Senate, just because it takes a long time to do it. The House passes a lot of bills, they have different rules about how they pass stuff, so I don't know if we're gonna get that out in the Senate or not.
How are you gonna go?
I haven't had a chance to review it yet, so I don't know the answer to that, but when I come to the Senate, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, next written question. What do you believe is the biggest issue facing Nebraskans right now, and what are you doing about it?
So the two biggest issues we've dealt with as a country, the things that are existential threats to our country, one is China's deterrence, and making sure China doesn't start World War III by trying to take Taiwan by force. I was just in Taiwan last week, talking to officials there about what we can do to be able, we continue to discourage Xi Jinping from trying to take that by force. The second biggest thing we have to face is our debt domestically. We're $36 trillion in debt. We're now spending more on interest than we are on national defense. We've got to get our spending under control to be able to manage that. So working on both of those is the two biggest things I've worked on.
Okay, last written question. Do you support funding the Department of Education?
The Department of Education actually has some very important functions that we gotta keep. For example, one of the things is student loans. And we make sure that those loans are being serviced. That's very important, because we don't, and if we're defaulting, then we actually stand to lose more in default loans than we would make by cutting the services to be able to service the funds. So that's an example of one of the things the Department of Education does, and we gotta make sure we keep funding it. Next question.
Senator, my name is Andrew Carrney. Thank you for inviting me here and just wanted to ask you some questions. Over my voting age, career, I have been a Democrat, a Republican, and now a nonpartisan, mainly because I'm set up with both sides blaming the other party for being a strange party. That's all the parties seem to be focusing on. So that's why I'm nonpartisan, way back in the days. And I think that's one of the reasons the last Senate election was Mr. Hardcore did very well, surprisingly. So I think more people are very fed up with this too. So I urge you to not do that. My question is, we seem to be coming into a constitutional crisis with courts making their rulings and President Trump ignoring them. When it comes to that, maybe, maybe it's a constitutional crisis, which we're pretty sure is gonna happen, or we're standing with President Trump with the Constitution.
There's no doubt our entire system is based on the rule of law and making sure we follow the Constitution. The executive branch overstepping or trying to expand its authority is not new. Biden administration did it as well, and that's what we have to watch, to be able to go through and to get those things. If you look right now, what's going on, so for example, it's taken, some of the examples have been in front of the.